Thank you very much for joining us here tonight, folks. We appreciate you coming in and joining us for the OSA Town Hall. This is the third one that we've done, talking about governance modernization. We're going to hear from a few people tonight, namely Ron Smell, our president, OSA president, Ron, thanks very much for joining us. Johnny Misley will be here as well. He'll be answering some of the operational questions. And throughout the evening, I'll be in the crowd. So if you have questions, we'd like you to stand up, come to the far side of your row, and we'll do a question there. So we've got the camera right in the middle, so if we can have you come to the far side to do the questions, just so we're not blocking any of the views throughout the livestream. So as I mentioned, we're having a livestream tonight, and we'd like all those online to participate as well. So if you're watching us online, you can ask questions in the chat, as well as you can ask questions on Twitter, @OSATweeter, and in the chat section, as I said. We've received a number of email questions as well, so we'll sprinkle those throughout the evening, but mostly, we want to get to those who are in attendance here tonight and have your opinion heard and ask questions of the governance process. So with that, I'm going to invite Ron up to do his presentation. We'll go about 20 minutes, and then we'll get into the Q and A. Thanks very much, Ron.
Okay, thank you very much, Ben. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Just, I'd like to acknowledge some of the board members who are here today with us. I'll start with Michael Allison, our vice president. We also have Joe Camacho, director-at-large, from our executive committee as well. We have Bill Spears, who is on our board of directors from the TSA. We have Tony Barbieri from York Region, and thank you to Tony and staff and everyone to make the arrangements to host this Town Hall meeting, very much appreciated. We have Mandy Apparicio from North York, welcome, Mandy, and your group. And we have William Hay from the Peel-Holton Soccer Association here with us this evening. And I hope that I haven't omitted any of my fellow board members. Further to Ben's notes, this is our parking lot over here. If there's a question, or a comment, or a theme that we need to capture and do some more investigative work on, that's the purpose of the parking lot. So with that, I want to start the presentation by just saying I'm here representing the board. These are decisions that the board has made to date, and as such, felt it was very, very important to share them with you. Communication is the key to our building blocks going forward as an organization, and building relationships and partnerships along with that. So one of the first issues that has come up is the question, why we're doing this? And what's the purpose of why we're proceeding in this fashion, in this direction? And as such, it's very obvious today that the world of sport is changing. There are a number of factors that are changing and have changed within the game. The game is much more business-related, much more business-associated, higher staffing levels, finances, et cetera, et cetera. And as such, we need to move to that level, or elevate ourselves to that level. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about good governance, a very, very key component in the game. We also have a chat about strategic plans. Most of the organizations, and many of the clubs, leagues, and districts within this room, have strategic plans going forward. And as such, we too, we all need to be in sync. And more importantly, hopefully, we can align the strategic plans. So no matter what club it is in the province of Ontario, or what district it is, at the end of the day, our provincial alignment and our national alignment is working to provide clear, very well-defined player pathways. With the strategic plans, you have to make or put together operational plans. And the operational plans are really the plans that staff works from. So the board sets the strategic plan, and then staff puts the operational plans together to ensure that, at the end of the day, we follow the direction that the board has set out. With the operational plans, of course, are performance measurements. Performance measurements is a very key component that's missing in the sporting world today. And as such, it's very, very important that we are able to measure, not just by numbers, but how the programs are delivered, how the service is delivered, et cetera. Through it all, reputational credibility is a key component. And every sporting organization has a credibility factor. And within that credibility factor, obviously, the goal is to elevate it and move it to the highest level possible. I mentioned in my comments the issue around alignment. Alignment is key for an athlete who comes into the system, who can see a clear direction, if that athlete is interested, or has dreams, goals, and aspirations about achieving the highest level of competition that he or she can achieve. And then, of course, communication. Communication is a part of every organization where we see struggles, whether it's at the club, the district, or the provincial or national levels, we continue to struggle. And as such, communication, the board of directors is working hard on enhancing communication moving forward, so that as decisions are made, or as new programs or services are provided, everyone's in sync to know what's occurring. So again, we need to make sure that they're effective, and at the end of the day, we need to ensure that they're strong, okay? And very, very important. I'm going to step back for a minute on the board's behalf, and just look at the strategic plan that was put together in 2013 to 2015. The strategic plan was built on four pillars. There are organizational stability, long-term player development, membership value, programs and services being the last one. And as such, the plan was put together, and I'll show you in a minute, that the first pillar that we really focused on was the second bulleted item there, which was long-term player development. But what was missing within our 213 to 215 plan was performance measurements, which I talked to earlier, where the operational plans support the strategic plan going forward. So as I said before, there was a huge focus on long-term player development. Really, it was more on the operational sides. We looked at grassroots through the LTPD concepts, club leagues, district leagues. We also focused greatly on regional leagues. We had the introduction of the OPDL, a standards-based program for athletes wanting to achieve high levels of competition. We had the League One Ontario, it's not League Ten, it's League One Ontario. And as such, it's a pro-am environment, standards-based. And of course, it was a gap in our system at the time, simply because when you got to the ages of 17, 18, or 19, there weren't many opportunities for you going forward to a high level. We spent quite a bit of time on rules rewrite, rules rewrite, excuse me. The rules rewrite started with approximately 660 pages, double-sided, of rules, regulations within the OSA. And this year, our rules rewrite is down to 154 double-sided pages. Through the board's work, and through staff's work of re-looking the issues, providing feedback, looking at key focus groups, et cetera, a lot of work has been done on our rules rewrite, or what we like to call organizational procedures. And then, one of the key components also is constant review and enhancements. So to any process, to any service delivery, to anything that we're doing, we all, at the end of the day, need to be looking at a review process, assessment process, and take it forward. 216 to 218 was the start of our strategic plan, our new strategic plan going forward for the next three years. The date of 218 was chosen, as that's the end date for the CSA strategic plan, and we're hoped to be fully aligned over the next two years. So there's a lot of components with respect to the alignment, not only the pitch side, but in the, what I'll call, the boardroom side, and in the office environment side. So really, three pillars there that we're trying to build simultaneously with our CSA, our national body. So there are four pillars that we're looking at, and they're very, very similar. We have the organizational stability pillar, long-term player development, membership engagement, and then the last one, which is building partnerships. The game will truly be, achieve its highest level of growth and development and success on the ability for us to build relationships and partnerships. That's really the way forward, and an issue that we all need to build on as we work together collectively, creating the best possible environments that we can create. So the board chose, at a meeting back in December 2013, chose to focus on organizational stability. And as such, the organizational stability of the organization, or the association, was focused on a new governance, a new governance model. So the board made the commitment back in December 2013 to move forward, and it's been three years and two months of hard work. So to the board members who are here, to the board members who are watching through livestream, et cetera, across our great province, an extended period of thanks. We took each of our board meetings, we dedicated a day of a governance workshop to each, and we really dived into some of the starting points that you're going to see tonight with respect to our processes going forward with new governance. And just want to mention at this point that this is an organic process. It's something that we need to build on. There is no black and white at the end of the day. It's about getting a good starting point, which the board obviously believes it has, as the board wanted to communicate this information. And as such, I'd just like you to keep that in the back of your mind going forward. So I mentioned it about new, smaller board, we'll talk about that. Distinct roles for the board and staff. In the past, there's been many crossovers of responsibilities, roles and responsibility moving forward. And another issue here with roles and responsibilities, what dovetails with that, is the issue of accountability. And accountability is an issue that needs to be built, that pillar needs to be brought forward and worked on here at the OSA. We want to look at an improved interface between the districts, the clubs, our academies, and OSA staff. That is another key component in what you're going to see tonight. And with that, we're confident that our engagement with clubs will improve. Clubs are the backbone of the system. The recreational game is the backbone of the system. I've heard many times where people have told me, Ron, the OSA is getting too elite, too elitist in how it's looking at the game. And I want to ensure everybody, at the end of the day, that the clubs, doing the work at the grassroots level, that's where it all starts, that's where it all begins. And we need to be sensitive to that, and understanding to that, that each club is different. Some clubs have high capacity, some don't have high capacity. So as we go through the whole issue of service and programs, we need to make sure that we can level that out and be flexible where we need to be flexible. And the last point that I brought here on behalf of the board is more direct communication, more direct communication with the clubs, with our leagues, and with our districts. We have found over the years that things get filtered. Some people are aware, some people are not aware. And as such, at the September board meeting of last year, the board of directors agreed to provide a single point of contact for people within our clubs, our leagues, and our districts, so that we can start that communication process. And that communication process was built on an information bulletin process, and an action item information bulletin process. So it's a starting point, it's not the endpoint, but through, hopefully, enhanced communication, we will get better moving forward. So you need to know, we're not alone. We are what I like to call the engine of Canada. I have served on the CSA's Members' Forum for four years, and through that, what you're going to see is some similarities in structure, but certainly, different roles and responsibilities when I talk about the district president forum, when we get to that point. Certainly, FIFA is going through reform, and I'm going to move very quickly past FIFA, because we all have our visions and our opinions about FIFA. But at the end of the day, CONCACAF is moving to a new governance structure, and CONCACAF is our way to World Cup activity for our elitist athletes. And then, of course, we have huge governance modernization taking place across Canada. So the 10 provinces and the three territories are all looking at their governance models. All of them have different capacities, all of them have different budgets. And as such, everyone is working hard and striving hard to get something together that has some commonality, that has some consistency amongst it, from the 13 entities that I just mentioned, but more importantly, looking towards, you know, just a real consistent message that, you know, we have built into our systems, and we have built into our processes good levels of governance across Canada. One of those provinces is Nova Scotia. And at this time, I'd like to share a video that Nova Scotia has put together.
Soccer Nova Scotia is excited to introduce changes to how we operate. We're changing the role of our board and creating operational teams to make us more dynamic and effective in our day-to-day business. Currently, the board of directors oversee our daily operations. This means Soccer Nova Scotia staff are restricted in their jobs, because they need the authorization of the board to make some decisions on projects. This process is ineffective and inefficient, so here's how we're fixing that. With the new system, the executive director will be responsible for operations, managing a team of Soccer Nova Scotia staff and operational committees. Staff will have more authority to run daily projects in a timely manner. Traditional committees will be maintained, including long-term player development, competitions, marketing, league, and member services. The new look committees will be composed of staff, league, club, and regional representatives, as well as coaches and officials, instead of Soccer Nova Scotia board members. Committees will meet and report to the executive director, will then update the board of directors on their progress. Similarly, the role of board of directors will shift from operational to a governance model. They'll be focused on strategic planning, risk management, finance and audit, as well as governance and nominations. Board members will be independent of regions or clubs. Instead, they'll include individuals with specific skill sets to assist Soccer Nova Scotia with fulfilling their mandate. Board members will no longer sit on operational committees. Finally, a separate Members' Forum will be created. This forum will include the seven regional presidents, or designates. The forum will need quarterly to discuss regional concerns or ideas. They will bring their requests to the executive director and president of Soccer Nova Scotia, who will then relay them to the committees and board. This will ensure regional presidents' representation and input on Soccer Nova Scotia management. The new look Soccer Nova Scotia governance model will help us all work better with more clarity on roles and responsibilities. Staff and members will have input and authority to make decisions on operational matters in a more timely fashion. And the board can focus on long-term vision for Soccer Nova Scotia, to ensure we're all heading in the right direction.
So I'd like to talk a bit about the history of the OSA. Thirty years ago is when the board was put in place, 30 years ago, back in 1985. And at that time, we had a staff of 14 people, a budget of 1.1 million, registrants of 180,000, 21 districts, seven executive committee members. The board type was very operational at that time, and the technology was a paper-based. You can see where we've moved to today, whereby things have really escalated, from both a human resource side and from a financial side. But the one thing that hasn't moved, the one thing that hasn't changed, has been the setup of the board, the structure of the board going forward. So as it was back in 1985, 28 people sitting around the table making decisions, that's the way it exists currently today. This is what it looks like, the whole issue of the committees, where the print there is a bit small, but as mentioned in the Nova Scotia video, supporting the standing committees of the board of 28, is a strategic planning committee, which I mentioned before, has put this together, as the four pillars together to start us on our journey. Finance and audit, the nominations committee, a risk management committee, an executive committee, and a governance committee. You'll notice that the judicial side of the process is kept separate and distinct. No influence by the board, it's a separate group of people who manage the judicial side of the game, from an appeals and from a disciplined process. The executive director currently has five committees, working under Johnny's direction at this time. Attack Committee, or what we call our technical advisory committee, our match officials development group, our league management committee, which has now been converted over to a competitions management committee, I think I got it right? Did I? Yes, thank you. Our competitions committee, which is now combined with our league management, and our marketing communications team. And behind these operational committees are skilled people, competency-based people. And as mentioned, no board participation is on these committees. It's an opportunity for the districts, and an opportunity for staff to come together to really deal with the issues of the game, from a pitch perspective and from a service delivery perspective, through the operations committee process. So OSA governance modernization, as I mentioned, the process began back in December 2013. Doesn't seem like three years, does it, folks? Right? Time flies when you're having fun, that's how I look at life. The board had multiple meetings, as I stated before. The board met at every board meeting, we had a workshop, plus we had some workshops outside of those. And really, the opportunity at the workshop was to create some knowledge, some education around what we were doing and how we were moving forward. You'll notice at the back of the room, I've put some billboards there that talk about the process of a policy board, what is a policy board, the principles that the OSA board of directors decided to take with respect to what they wanted to focus on with the five principles. You also see three charts there from the CSA. Again, the three principles of the CSA, talk about some of the requirements going forward. The OSA just recently submitted their evaluation process report to the CSA Governance Committee and the Board of the CSA, which was shared with our board of directors at our December meeting. And we're well on our way, well over 50% of some of the challenges that we have with respect to retooling and redesigning are underway. And as such, again, I want to mention the word, this is an organic process going forward. The board's role has been changing. We are in the process, and have been in the process, for a number of months now, of being strategically focused, strategically orientated, looking at the issues that we believe we should be looking at. Operations has been moved over to staff, but there still are communication issues and levels that we need to enhance that. So at the end of the day, everyone has a high level of confidence, trust, that things are being managed appropriately. So we've gone from operations to a strategy, policy, strategic-based focus. The board adopted the principles of good governance from the CSA, and as such, we're now being measured by the CSA on our ability to fulfill what we've committed to do going forward. And at the AGM of last year, 2016, the board of directors, through our AGM, and all our members, agreed to end all the board terms at our June 2017 AGM. So everyone's term ends come this June, and potential for a new governance model to be put in place. So what does that governance model look like? Well, it's a board of 12 directors, it has four standing committees, maybe it'll be end up five, maybe it'll end up three, but we've identified four standing committees. The executive director will have five operational committees, but maybe there's a special program or special service delivery that needs to be done at the end of the day, and that either goes up or goes down. Our staff count, our staff budgeted head count is at 36, not changing. We'll do, obviously, Johnny will do a complete full review, and Johnny's the one who reports back to the board and is accountable to the board on all operational matters to the board of directors. You'll notice that the judicial bodies have again been kept separate, and this is very, very critical in keeping the judicial system separate from the board. One of the major complaints about the judicial process is there's too much bias, too many people wearing too many hats at the end of the day, and it's not a true and fair system. The key box up there that I really want to talk about tonight is the one about the district president's forum, where the 21 members, current members of the current board of directors, would shift and become a district president's forum at the end of the day. And I'll talk a bit more about that as I go through the presentation. So the new board structure will be competency-based and elected by you, the membership. All the positions will be elected, nothing has been taken away or removed from you as members of the association. Please remember that the members own the bylaws, so any amendments to the bylaws are not being touched or taken away from the membership, that is your responsibility at the end of the day. Registration fees will remain with you as a group, as a whole, so there would be no independent move by the board of directors, the new board of directors, to change fees or that, without the approval of the membership at the end of the day. The other issue, of course, is audit. The auditor, the audit process is controlled, again, by the members. And I really want to stress here that a lot of people think that people are losing power. It's not about losing power, it's about redefining the roles and responsibilities. So at the end of the day, the district president's forum will have its ability to make change within the system, if in fact, change is required within the system. There'll be a president, there'll be a vice president. There will be no district representation on the board, as we currently have or currently noted. However, there will be five directors, which will be residents in regions. And you'll see that the residents in regions, the board has taken the opportunity to put districts within specific areas, specific regions, and we'll be looking for a competency-based, highly-skilled person to come from each region, and fill the board to 10 directors, actually, it's 12 directors, including the president and the vice president. Very important that you remember that it's a competency-based, and everyone's elected. And then, the issue of a minimum of three directors from each gender. And I just want to relay a bit of information that came out last year, you may be aware of it or not, from the province of Ontario, from our current governance, that they announced that the new gender diversity targets, to ensure more women have the opportunity to reach top leadership positions at provincial agencies and other governance organizations. The Ontario government has set a target that will make up at least 40% of all appointments to every provincial board and agency within the province of Ontario. And so people are encouraged to start now, to set targets, and the target that we have set is 25%. But at the end of the day, it's been legislated for 40%, and so we're actually below the target, but it's a starting point for us. We can certainly build upon it, and it's critical that we do this. Why? Because we receive funding from the provincial government. And the government, through its documentation, which has been shared with the board, will not issue their grants and their bursaries to us if there isn't compliance at the end of the day. So we need to be looking at these issues, we need to be looking at what's going to work for the province of Ontario, and more importantly, we need to look at the whole issue of diversity of our board, and diversity of our organization moving forward. The district president's forum, the 21 district presidents, it'll be made up of the 21 district presidents, the OSA president, and the OSA executive director. And this is really a key area that I would like to talk about for a few minutes, because from my perspective, this is really where the game can change here in the province of Ontario. This is the group that'll have accountability and responsibility for what's taking place in the game today. This is where the district presidents can bring forward their issues that concern them. The current process is the district presidents come to our board meeting of 28, where all our representative districts are, and in the past, have lobbied to have issues approved or voted, whatever the case may be, and it's not a healthy environment. Now, districts that have special needs, districts that have financial issues, districts that have capacity can deal directly with Johnny, our staff, on achieving what they need to achieve from a flexibility perspective. So the district president's forum is a new avenue, it's a real new initiative, it's mirrored somewhat from the CSA president's forum, but it's mirrored in a much different way in that it's very operationally based. And I'll give you an example, we have our CSL Regional League within this region, recently met with our seven district presidents, and talked about the regional league going forward. From my perspective, having been there, having witnessed what occurred, this is a prime example where everyone's issues are heard, put on the table, and it's really about the two entities working together with staff, if staff is required, to make the appropriate changes going forward. So I just want to share it, it's what I call a small microcosm of the district president's forum from a 21-person perspective, but that's a key example of how this process can work forward. It also gives our leagues a place within the dialogue and communication process. Currently, our league- Currently, our leagues are considered, our regional leagues, our provincial leagues are considered as associate members. The only time we really talk to them is at the AGM, and we ask them to come out, place their one vote, and have a nice day. That has to change. Our leagues are doing great service providing for us and have great expertise on them. So again, this is an opportunity to take that forward. So the District Presidents' Forum, it'll provide an interface, a direct interface between the districts, the Executive Director and the Board President on an advisory basis. The District Presidents' Forum is advisory, but at the end of the day, I already mentioned the four pillars that they, I'll use the word, have authority over or accountability over. So if changes are required, it comes from the members forum, the District Presidents' Forum, and those processes are put through and they're acted on. It receives collective input and feedback from the districts on operational matters and development and implementation of the strategic plan. And it serves as a forum for networking, sharing of ideas, new concepts, et cetera. Our districts and the members within our districts are doing great work in this province, but we haven't figured out a mechanism or have a mechanism whereby we get the interface to share these best practices going forward. This forum can do that job for them. Everything I'm talking is about us working collectively as a group to make it happen at the end of the day. Club and district benefits. Sorry about that. Club and district benefits. I wanted to talk a bit about this because this really has been brought forward by Soccer Nova Scotia. But what they've done is they've created club working groups. And these working groups can now look at coaching development. What's needed, what isn't needed, what's working, what isn't working. Same with match officials, athlete development, competition I mentioned about, whereby the leagues, our regional leagues, all have a great opportunity to connect and really talk about the service delivery as we know it. And then, of course, club development. Another example I'll give you about the District Presidents' Forum and how well it's working. In southwestern Ontario, Southwest Soccer Association is working with Emsa, who's working with Lampden Kent, who's working with Exa County, which is in Windsor. And the four district presidents meet on a regular basis, meet with technical staff on a regular basis, bring forward their league issues on a regular basis. And so between those four district presidents, they've really created a good, strong environment where now they're looking at the potential of some inter-district grassroots initiatives going amongst the four districts, looking at how they can improve and develop those at the same time looking at the regional and the inter-district league setup. So we have some examples in this province of what I believe are very, very good, strong initiatives going forward. We can enhance this to our northern section, our eastern section, and even within our central area to make the best possible environments for our athletes at the end of the day. So some outcomes and benefits of governance modernization is a predictable and consistent decision-making by the board. This is critical going forward. Effective and approved communications, I have talked about it, especially when we're putting out new policy, new programs, or providing new service delivery. Greater advanced notice of policy program implementation. We've been criticized many times about putting issues out in what I'll call a short-term period of time, instead of giving it a 12-month, or 18-month, or 24-month window of opportunity. So number one, clubs can budget, balance for it at the end of the day. And more importantly, we communicate it to the membership as a whole. And then, of course, effective and regular performance assessment of the board and staff. Where are we currently? Our next steps is the appointment of a Transitional Nominations Committee. Back in the fall, a pre-selection committee was put together, approved by the board. They have gone out and they've secured a Transitional Nominations Committee team that will be appointed by the board at our February 12th board meeting. So we have a special general meeting on February 11th, Saturday. And then on Sunday, the board will appoint our nominations committee to start their work, begin their work of recruiting, looking for competent, skills-based people going forward. The board has been working very, very hard, the preparation of bylaw amendments. This is a really daunting task for the OSA. We haven't reviewed our bylaws in many, many years. And we have many of the bylaws that just don't fit new governance going forward. So a new set of amendment of bylaws will be presented to the membership at our special general meeting on Saturday, February 11th. It's very, very important that all our members are present and can vote on the new bylaws. And having said that, from that, the nominations committee will be put in place. And then there'll be continued communication, dialogue, discussion. Again, it's an organic process. Again, this is not the final, this is not the complete end model. This is about a starting point, a place for us to move forward. And more importantly, put in place and enhance our operation with the tools and with the best practices that we can share across our great country. And at the end of the day, implement the ones that work for us in our organization. So with that, we're at the Q and A time. And be willing to take forward any questions. We can always go back to a slide if you need some time to reference a slide or check the information.
Just a quick round of applause for Ron. It's not easy to stand up and talk about governance. So for some of those who came in late, we're doing the Q and A session now. So if you can slide out to the side of your row, if you have a question, raise your hand, I'll come by and we'll start the process there. Please keep the questions to governance modernization. I know forums like this tend to lend themselves to a variety of topics, but we're here to talk governance modernization tonight. So as your questions come, please raise your hand and I'll come to the back. And if we can stand to the side, just because the camera is right in the middle, we don't want to interrupt the beautiful view of Ron. We have the first question here in the back. I'll come right to you.
Just while Ben's going there, I'd like to acknowledge Penny Merritt. Penny is a member of the CSA Board of Directors, resides in the region of York. So welcome Penny. Thank you for being here this evening.
Hello, Ron.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard Harold, Unionville Melican Soccer Club. Hi, Ron. Thanks for hosting us this evening. Reviewing the charts, I've been standing at the back because I'm guilty of multitasking. I'm reviewing your boards here at the same time I'm listening to you and looking at your wonderful presentation. And on the first tier of the four pillars, we see a membership development and engagement. Right? And one of the lines that caught my eye, as somebody who's involved with the grassroots and managing budgets every day, is increasing membership fees. What does that mean?
Increasing membership fees? Well, it means at the end of the day, there may have to be some type of incremental movement going forward. Maybe with the development, we just put in place a new business development department. This was an initiative that was put in place by Johnny. And at the end of the day, there's a potential of hopefully some strong corporate sponsorship, Richard, going forward. So maybe at the end of the day, it'll be reduced from a membership fee perspective. I know that the board is conscious of it. I know also that the board, through their membership, owns authority and responsibility. Currently, there has been no discussion around the issue of membership fee. The only recent membership fee that was looked at was our indoor fee, which took place this year going forward.
Okay, just to respond, thanks. I mean, one of my, I've long grappled with the issue of, after 20 years of volunteering in soccer, I've long grappled with the issues of fees and the fee structure and financing of soccer as well in this country where the hockey draws money and scholarships because we have so many hockey teams. The English Premier League, for instance, has 20 teams in the top flight. Sponsorship flows from them down through soccer, and you see a lot of the revenue flowing that way. In Canada, unfortunately, in Ontario, we have one team. No money flows out of that team to the grassroots. The grassroots are full of volunteers who are working, and we're frequently hitting our heads against player fee resistance. They don't, they're not going to go to the NHL. They're not going to go to the, well, some go to the EPL, but most barely make it. One Unionville member recently was signed, Sergio was recently signed to Toronto FC. But very little money flows the other way. And I like the alternative fees part of membership engagement as opposed to membership fees. I really think the governance, I agree with some of your initiatives here, but we really have a revenue problem in soccer. To really get grassroots engaged, we have a revenue problem. And I think we need to emphasize that a little more going the other way. Rather than membership fees up, we need more money coming down.
Could you frame that in the context of the modernization, Ron?
Yep. I mean, at the end of the day, that's a topic of discussion pretty well at all our board meetings. Financials, et cetera, brought forward at that. I really want Johnny to talk a bit about the business development model, Richard, and give you a bit of an overview of what the initiatives that Johnny has put in place, has accomplished, and where he's taking that business development model going forward, which really talks about financial stability for the organization in the future without putting the burden on our recreational players.
Test, test? Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, Richard. Great question. Let me, let me start to answer that question in a, in a way that is sort of abstract and they get to more detail. Non-for-profit sports organizations like the OSA aren't any different than non-for-profit sport organization in the rest of this province and across the country. They're based on three major funding envelopes. Membership fees, program revenue, and government funding. Okay? The ones that are higher profile and have the assets to sell can make lots of money off of corporate dollars. But corporate sponsorships is not the white knight. And any sport will tell you, even a very profiled sport like Skate Canada or Hockey Canada will tell you that, in their overall budgets, that corporate dollars are not driving their overall operation. Government funding. To give you an idea where we sit, we're the biggest PSO in Canada. And we are the tentacles for the politics of the day of our government in Ontario into the community like any other sport can. And we're the highest-funded sport. Guess what percentage of our overall budget is from our provincial government? Who wants to take a shot? Tony, what do you think? And you're on the finance committee. 2%. So we have a model that's based on membership fees, very much on, a little bit on government funding and program revenue. And unfortunately, membership fees and program revenue are our main sources. When I came into the OSA and they asked me some questions to do an assessment of the organization, I said, there's challenges here for long-term stability of this organization. What I say about the OSA is typical of sports. And the CSA is the same way. Our membership fee that you pay, the participants pay, is $9.03 now? $9.03, and it goes to the CSA. So at our mini level, when you take away the insurance and pay to the CSA, we have 34 cents per player comes to the OSA. So what I'm trying to say is that, Richard, your comment is very well taken. Because not only is the OSA on a slippery slope from a stability standpoint, the CSA's funding model is on as a slippery slope as ours because they're predicated on their stability being membership fees. So what's the solution? Well, part of the solution is for us knowing that government funding is dwindling or is competitive, as well as grant writing and all types of things that we get in. So we do not want to see membership fees always having to be increased. And for the last two years, we haven't raised outdoor fees. We raised indoor fees this past year to balance off our budget. This year, we've balanced the budget. We don't need to have the outdoor fees raised. So we created a business operations department, hired someone who's got business acumen. And that individual is the director of business operations and oversees a marketing and communications, a revenue development, and an events department. And everything has to develop revenue. And we've been able to go out to the corporate community in a different fashion because the word sponsorship is not mentioned in our lexicon. It's called partnerships. So when I came on board, gone were the days where, give me $5,000, I'll put your banner up. And at the end of the year, we'll invite you up to a little barbecue. Thank you very much. Those days are gone. Now companies will want to invest in organizations like ours because we do have some assets. They want to know how they can build their brand and how they can sell their products. So what kind of mutual ground is there with our objectives and that particular brand's objectives that's beneficial to soccer as well as beneficial to them? That's the kind of discussions we're in now with corporates. Canada or corporate Toronto, if you want, corporate Ontario, really. Question was asked about professional soccer. The model in Europe is different than the model here. However, one of the very first things, you saw up there, one of our new strategic plan items was partnerships. And one of the very first questions we got into as a board, Mike here chaired the Strategic Planning Committee. And we got into that discussion about partnerships. And the first question that we talked about, remember, Mike, was, we have a, two professional soccer teams in the province of Ontario, of which one is at a totally different level, and that's Toronto FC. Do we have a partnership with them? No. Why not? And there's an answer to why not. But going forward, with change of leadership at TFC and leadership changes also within the Ontario Soccer Association, we were able to have discussions with them now to say, what can we do to bring our brands together? Because we're accused here at the OSA of being GTA-centric by our northern and eastern members, and rightfully so. Guess who also is being branded as GTA-centric? TFC is. So in our business discussions with them, we formed a five-year partnership with them. And in that partnership, it's about player development, it's about community building, and it's about business operations. So we can take our assets, put them together, and leverage what we're doing. So I don't want to get ahead of ourselves right now, but that five-year partnership we're working on, shortly we're going to make an announcement where you're going to see TFC make an investment in grassroots soccer and in soccer in our province, which has never been done before. Exactly. The other sport, pro sport, is the Ottawa Fury. Now, having a conversation with John Pugh at the Ottawa Fury is different than having one with Bill Manning at TFC. But they have some business objectives as well, and we've had some preliminary discussion with them. So any pro soccer team that's set up here, we want to make sure you have partnerships with them that they're not only taking out athletes, they're also giving back. And thanks to TFC showing the way, we're going to have some positive news coming out above our current five-year agreement we have with them. So it's a long-winded answer, top of mind, but we're starting to see some progress to try to keep fees down.
Thank you, Johnny.
This is an interactive evening, and we're taking questions online through our Twitter stream as well through our live chat. And I'll take a question from the live chat now. Ken Green has asked, where does the league management input fit in as a forum? And will this include OPDL in the governance structure coming forward, Ron?
The issue of league management, it'll be an operations issue. As I mentioned before, it's now a competitions management committee. It'll be under the leadership of Johnny and his team. And it'll include all our leagues, Ben, all our leagues going forward with respect to our regional leagues, OPDL, and obviously some work with our League One Ontario, our semi-pro league. So again, that restructure will hopefully address many, many of the issues that are being raised with respect to how competition, how service delivery of that competition needs to take place here in the province of Ontario.
I'll take questions from this side of the room if you want to come over.
Sure. Dermot Salvatore from Richmond Hill. Ron, I just, we had, you had mentioned members there throughout. Can you just perhaps clarify and define what membership will look like? And who in fact will be the members under this new model?
Yeah, the membership will continue to be what it is. We have had questions raised about membership going forward and defining membership more, maybe more clearly, more effectively in the future. But our current membership is our districts. Our 21 districts are our current members within our system, Dermot. And of course, you're an extension of that, that process simply because you're members of your respective districts. So you know, the issue of membership is important. We had, at our last workshop, you know, we talked about our leagues and how our leagues are associate members within our system. Yet our leagues were saying to us, we just want to be service providers. We don't need a vote. We don't need to be members. We're here to service, service you, service the districts. So in essence, our members almost have two allegiances. One to their district and one to the league. And of course, between the district and the league, you got two forms of governance. We really have a lot of duplication and repetitive issues within that process. And again, that's another, another objective for us going forward at the end of the day. It's an organic process. We're not there yet. And we don't have everything completely designed to a point. I really want the District Presidents' Forum to take the leadership role here to advise, okay, what needs to be done. And that has to be done through a collective, not around a board table, but around the district presidents getting together, meeting collectively, either in small groups, regionalized, or as a collective as a whole. So that not only can we talk about membership, but we can talk about what we're really here for. And that is to improve the environment for our coaches, our athletes, and our administrators.
Bounce back over to this side if there's another question from this side of the room. Come on over here and we'll... Come on over here and we'll...
Claus Westra, Wichita Stovall Soccer Club, the concept of separating standing and operating committees and having a different reporting alignment seems to make a lot of sense. Do you have any templates or sample roles and responsibilities of those nine standing and operational committees at this point in time that you might be able to share?
Yes, definitely do. We have terms of ref, sorry, we have terms of reference for each of the operational committees and terms of reference for our standing committees. If you go onto our website, you can see it there, but certainly we'll make a notation here to circulate that information out, and at least circulate the links out through an information bulletin, so people who are interested in looking at those terms of reference can have a look at them. Now, the current terms of reference for our standing committees may change going forward with the new implementation of a new board, but certainly the operational committee templates, terms of reference are there, and, and of course, through a district president role, direct communication and linkage can occur with Johnny to have any further dialogue or discussion on some specific or certain issues that are brought to our attention.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think all of our clubs throughout the York region fall into the trap of getting involved overly into the operational levels and not really dealing in the strategic, which a board member should do, and it's kind of frustrating, because it eats up time and it distracts you from the proper directions that you need to work in, so I welcome that. Thank you.
Yeah, we are definitely here to share, and I want to say that there's a lot of clubs, a lot of clubs across this province who've taken on strategic initiatives and put strategic plans. Brian Mason here from Wasa, I know, Brian, you've done tremendous amount of work with your club in Ottawa, in the Ottawa district, about what's being done there and how you're rolling out your programs within it. It's just a matter of the people getting together and sharing it. I can't tell you at the national level, under the president's forum, that was one of the major issues that we tackled right away, where we're sharing information with the territories, who maybe are completely volunteer, have no paid staff, and how do they move their game forward if we don't share our information? You know, I guess it'd be nice to sell it off at the end of the day and make a little additional revenue, Richard, but I think in the, in the family, that's not an appropriate way to, to go about that, so I want, it's really about people taking the initiative to share, and I believe that a district president's forum can be a huge vehicle to make that happen, and not only at our club level, but at our league level as well.
Is there anybody on this side of the room? John?
John Highland, North Toronto Soccer, you talk about the president's forum basically being the only forum for which clubs can really communicate or be involved in any operations. Will those presidents have time to see and go through and back to their clubs with anything the staff are bringing into place before it's actually brought in, so as we have a say, or do we just have to react to what's happening?
So as I said before, John, whether it's, whatever the process is going forward, forward from a timing perspective, the district president's forum can be a key vehicle for that. So if the board is looking to implement, for argument's sake, a new program, or implement a new fee, or whatever at the end of the day, the first communication should be to the district president's forum for feedback, for advice, how do we manage it going forward? Too many people have criticized us for the fact it gets rammed down people's throat, there's not a time to react to it, and there's very little opportunity for some dialogue and feedback back to the board of directors or back to staff, if in fact it's a staff initiative going forward. So to answer your question, that process will change, it'll be a key integral part of us developing and moving the game to a higher level, and give people a higher level of confidence and trust that their voice is being heard, okay, and more importantly, that their voice and what they're bringing forward is truly taken to heart and placed where it needs to be placed within the system. As I said before, what North Toronto needs, or what the District of TSA needs, is much, much different than Lampton, Kent, who's one of our smallest districts in the organization. So your district president will have more time to spend more time with your club or your issues, not worry so much as at the OSA board level, because currently we have presidents at the OSA board level, or members at the OSA board level, who are wearing three hats, an OSA hat, a district hat, a club hat, or a league hat. It's about redefining the roles and responsibilities, John, and with that redefinition of roles and responsibilities, the accountability level should rise at every level of the game, simply because people will be held accountable for what they are. It's too easy for volunteers to say, you know, I'm too busy, or I walk away from things. I'm not saying a lot of people are like that, it's a little different when it's a staff issue, staff is being paid, no different in your club, no different for us at the OSA level, where accountability has to be brought forward. One of the issues on the indoor fee, and I'll mention it, okay, it was communicated to the board back and voted on in the board in December 2015, as part of our budget cycle going into June 2016 at the AGM, yet the communication didn't flow, and that's why we looked at the information bulletin system, where we basically lost six to seven months of opportunity of communication on an indoor fee, and it was viewed by the membership, and rightly so viewed by the membership, that it was rammed down their throat, where it had to be implemented in the fall of 2016. Again, we're into that thirteen-letter word, John, communication, that's really got to flow two ways, and everybody has to listen to everybody at the end of the day.
So, any more questions from this side of the room before I slide back over? Is there any on the far side of the room? I'll pull a question from email then while you're still thinking. District presidents are going to continue to play a role in Ontario. What are your thoughts on this advisory role and what its impact will be, and how you see it working in a day-to-day basis? The question's directed at Ron.
Yeah, we haven't worked out all the details with respect to the district president's forum. How many times a year is it going to meet? Do they want to take subgroups within the district president's forum? So with respect to, and I'll use this region, with respect to TSA, North York, York, Heronia, who did I forget, Tony? In the central area here, have I forget anybody? Well, Scarborough, yes, Scarborough. Well, Icaus and Durham, what I was trying to say was, Icaus, Durham, and Scarborough is kind of a nice mix. They used to do a lot of work years ago as the three districts, with their three district presidents, on how they managed the CESL, which was then back in the days of those days, and I just see that the central environment for York region, TSA, North York, and Heronia, York included, it'll be a much more effective way of communicating and dealing with issues. I just gave you an example, it was a competition example, but there's many, many other examples. To your point about sharing information for strategic plan initiatives at both the club and the district level, I believe a lot of the work's been done, it's just we don't talk to each other. It's like we create this barrier and wall, this filter, and it's almost like, I'm not going to share my stuff with you, you might get bigger than me or surpass me at the end of the day, I don't know. It's, it's really frustrating, and as president of the association, you know, I can name lots of clubs who have great strategic programs across this province and doing wonderful things at the end of the day, and with that, I've matted it with strong operational programs as well. So, as you can see, I'm a big proponent of the district president's forum, and the reason is, I've seen it work at the national level. The national level is much more strategic, national level is totally different than the concept we're talking about here. This is not loss of power, the district president's forum, this is actually gaining more ability to have your issues addressed at the end of the day. I don't even like that word, power, but a lot of people are viewing it that way, so to use the same terminology, that's not what it's, it's not a loss of power. It'll be up to the people to make it work. So, you know, whether we have three or four sub-parties of that district president's forum, let the district president's forum decide that. Why would we let the board decide? Why would we let a board decide that? Let the people who are engaged, let the people who are the members decide that going forward, and then they own it, they're accountable for it, and they're expected to deliver on it.
Is there any more questions for this evening? Great.
Spencer Cannon, Aurora FC and the York Region Soccer Association Board. Ron, a question regarding the makeup of the new board that you're looking at. The five members that are going to be, I can't remember the slide, but not from the region, the next five down from there?
Independents.
Independents.
Yeah.
Can you talk us through a couple of questions I have? One, will those people be outside the game hired or brought in to that committee from outside the game, so there'll be no conflict of interest? And secondly, will those people be actually paid positions within the board?
Yeah, there are no paid positions at this point within the board, we'd have to raise fees, just kidding, Richard. No, there are no enhancements to accommodating board members, other than through expenses, et cetera. With respect to the five independent directors and the five regional directors, of the five regional directors, we split it down to five regions, and the districts form regions, form those specific regions. So, we want the person domiciled there, we want to have a board that shows all types of diversity on it, we want highly skilled people, we want, of course, we want people on the board who know the game, understand the game, are part of the game. They will not be able to hold a subsequent position in any part of our organization going forward. This is highlighted and it's listed out in our bylaws, Spencer, at the end of the day. Their total role and responsibility will be to serve the province at the end of the day. Could you technically have a director from the York, what I'll call the York region, or our central region, and one from, an independent from the same? It's possible. That's why we've put a nominations committee together. The nominations committee will do that work. They will go out, they'll recruit, they'll look for people, they'll bring people's names and their resumes and competencies forward. At the end of the day, you, the membership, are going to see that at the end of the day, and people will stand for those positions based on what their, their vision, their mission is with respect to being part of the new board going forward. So, at the end of the day, from, from my perspective, we've built a little bit into the role behind the independent. You know, an independent or a director can't be a contractor, I don't have the bylaws directly in front of me, but we've identified, the board has identified where they see conflicts, and they've highlighted those to say, no, that's not going to be allowed, and you can't, you'll either have to relinquish it. So for argument's sake, if a district president wants to put his or her name forward for one of those positions of twelve, they will have to give up their role within their district. They won't be allowed to go forward holding another hat, and they won't be allowed to go forward if they hold a club hat, or they hold a league hat, or they're a contractor, a paid employee, or something like that within the organization. The board's done very good work on the bylaws, where that's where the system is entrusted, and then you own the bylaws at the end of the day. So, that's why we're bringing the bylaw amendments forward, the bylaw amendments are being brought forward by Peel Halton. Have we missed something? Have we caught it all? No, but we're collectively willing to work to make it stronger and better in the future.
One of the terms we hear a lot, Ron, is, when it regards to the independent directors, is captains of industry, people that are sort of at the top of the game of finance or marketing, or whatever the industry is that's their respect. Do you want to speak a little bit further to that, that, that?
Well, I can tell you, people are waiting for the appointment of the nominations committee. We are being indented with people who want to join and want to be part of this organization going forward. So we are receiving communications, and we're saying to captains of industry, captains of, of high-profile communication networks, captains of high-profile Bay Street law firms and other associations within the province of Ontario, who are waiting for the nominations committee to be given and empowered by the board to start that collective work. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the recruitment side of the whole nominations process. So to be receiving that now, the word is out there, the word is out there, the change is coming, the word is out there, it's competency base and skilled that we're looking for, and of course, we want people to have some background in soccer, but it's not the be-all and the end-all. I would be pretty concerned if nobody on that board had some soccer background. More importantly, I hope we get some of our top athletes apply. We should have an athlete on our board going forward. To me, it would be good and healthy for our game, and it'd be nice if it was a female athlete as well, representing the women's game, which has really blossomed and ballooned in the last five to six years. So I'm excited when the board puts the nominations committee into a process about the applications and what applications we get. I think we're going to be inundated with a lot of people who are very interested in being part of what I'll call the new OSA, what I'll call a new vision, a new beginning going forward.
This is an interactive evening, and we're continuing to take questions from our live stream tonight, so we'll jump right into that now. Rose asks, if the forum after one year or so is struggling or has difficulties, how can we go about making changes so that we can adjust certain things that may come up or may need to be identified?
So we had that problem at the CSA level, Ben. Our first year was a, was a struggle. To be honest, the provincial presidents missed being on the CSA board. I remember sitting as chair where they felt they didn't know what was going on, they felt that they were not valued anymore, and what we did was, we created focus groups, we started to work collectively together, and we bridged that issue, we moved beyond it. So, in any form of change, I believe that people feel maybe devalued, because they just aren't quote-unquote "sitting at the top level of the game," but from my perspective, there's a role for everybody in the game, and you know what, just as the janitor who cleaned all the washrooms at Nassau, and they put a man on the moon, he was recognized, she was recognized for their tremendous work, yet they had nothing to do with the project at the end of the day. That's another area. Currently, it's sort of who likes who the best, everybody lobbies around the floor, and somebody gets elected at the end of the day. We're moving away from that, and that's healthy for the game. So, I know I'm a little excited about it, but I think it's important that you understand that this is a new beginning, it's a new era for the OSA, and, you know, staff and others, and we got great people on the board, and I think that with the people who are currently in the district president's role, they'll be able to do a great job for us in really fine-tuning and redefining what's important to the game.
Another crowd question?
Hi, Adam.
Adam Candido, Woodbridge Soccer Club. Ron, with this new structure, would the OSA consider using an outside independent group to run OPDL, for example, like DG Sports, who do a great job with League One?
Okay, so, that's really, I'm going to quote it, an operational issue, Adam. That's something that certainly Johnny can have a discussion with the group as a whole. I know that the OPDL meets on a fairly regular basis over the course of the year, they have an operational committee and they have a technical committee. Those are the types of discussions that should take place with Johnny and staff to move that, that initiative or that suggestion or recommendation forward. I, I really want to stay focused on what we're doing at the board level, and I think that's important.
Is there other questions from the crowd?
Juan Gonzalez, General Manager of Toronto United Footsaw.
Hi, Juan.
Member of YRS.
Congratulations for all your successes last year with your club.
Thank you, thank you.
And Footsaw, you guys and the team and all your support staff did a wonderful job. Congrats.
This is, thank you. This is a question mainly for all of the clubs and for you as well, as well as the OSA. Ronaldinho, Messi, Ronaldo, Neymar, they were all Footsaw players that developed into great soccer players, and right now, currently on our Canadian Men's National Team, we have ten players from Ontario out of fourteen, fourteen players that have all grown and played in Ontario. Our assistant national coach is from Ontario, Lorenzo Redwood, and there's four players from my club who have signed professional contracts in the States. Now, Footsaw is a game that develops players for the outdoor game. My question to you is, is there going to be a committee or a board specifically for Footsaw, and is there going to be a budget at all in order to develop these Footsaw players to take them on to the eleven-dead side pitch?
Yes, I did. There we go. As you know, Juan, we've had... As you know, Juan, we've had a lot of discussion around the game of footsaw and how it truly is recognised as FIFA's indoor game. I've had many discussions with Johnny and staff. We're looking at how we build that into our budget process going forward, how we develop coaching in this country, in Canada, with respect to footsaw. There needs to be some more integration and support from our national body when it comes to match official training and when it comes to coaching training. So, it is on our radar. We have a good example in Peel Halton, who put together a standards-based league. Congratulations to William and the board of directors, who took initiative to start a standards-based league. Tony, I believe you've got initiatives ongoing in York region with respect to elevating the game and highlighting the game going forward. We continue to operate our club championships and our national championships. We've had a few issues where CONCACAF is cancelled, or we haven't been able to put forward our national footsaw teams. So, to you and the dedication and commitment that you give to the game, we have an obligation to know that there's thousands of players in the province of Ontario who want to play the game of footsaw, and they want to see it brought to a higher level. That'll be Johnny's role along with tac and technical groups to leverage. Again, these are initiatives that can be discussed with at the district president's forum, where someone like William, Tony, and others who have footsaw programs, want to operate footsaw programs, come together as a collective, liaising, working with Johnny and his team, they take the initiative and move forward. Because not everybody in the province is interested in footsaw, but where those pockets, nuggets, those areas of great strength are, we need to take those, envelop them, and really move it forward. So, yes, it's on the radar. Are we moving quickly enough? Nothing ever moves quickly within the sporting organisation. Nothing moves quickly within our organisation. We need to make sure we analyse, that we review the facts and the issues that are there with respect to finances and capacity and all those issues. And I know that you'll continue to do your part with your club and working with your district in continuing that development and growth.
Thank you. To all the clubs and districts, if you guys can push your players to develop in footsaw, trust me, it will develop for the eleven-aside game. These players will develop for the eleven-aside game. And also, I look forward to contributing or seeing if this committee for footsaw can happen at the OSA. Thanks.
Thank you, Juan.
And I think we all know Leo Messi was a big fan of governance reform, so... If there's any further questions from this side of the room or the other, come on over.
Shaun Gill from Clyburn-Nobleton Soccer Club, and I also sit on the York Region Soccer Association Board. My question is a fairly long one, Ron. It kind of builds a little bit off what was being said by the gentleman that you said was more of a league management question that should be directed to Johnny. But I can tell you, the sitting here as a board member for the club and sitting at the district, I believe in governance reform. I believe it is something that's required. But looking at the way some of the things have been dealt by the OSA, most recently, let's say, the OPDL, league, the removal of clubs, the reintroduction of clubs, I've personally had conversations with Johnny about how this was managed. I've had conversations with you about how it was managed. And from my perspective, it was managed terribly. And this current model is one that's going to put more control at the hands of the executive director of the OSA and less at the hands of the district. So, currently, in the current model, I can speak to our district president, who sits on your OSA board, and I know that that matter is going to be discussed in that boardroom. In your new model, isn't it that I'm being put, as a club, we're being pushed further away from that boardroom discussion? Because now you're talking about us going to the district, who's going to be speaking to an advisory council of the district presidents that you will be sitting on and that will potentially make its way to the boardroom. There are real concerns I have from that perspective with the governance model, is that you're putting so much control of the game of soccer to so few. How do you address that?
Yeah, with respect to the OPDL setup or structure, from my perspective, the OPDL group has mechanisms and tools to communicate issues going forward. As you know, Shaun, the district isn't part of that process currently the way that it's set up. Again, I believe that through advice, through advisement, through people getting together and collectively talking about where deficiencies are or where gaps are within the system, the district president's forum can form some type of communication tool to communicate those issues. But more importantly, the OPDL clubs have an opportunity to do that within the operational committees and the technical committees that are there. We don't discuss OPDL at the board level. The board made a commitment to look at things strategically. And if we did talk about OPDL business at the club level, I'd have 28 different opinions to deal with at the end of the day. It could be worse, okay? It could be less effective from my perspective going forward when I've got 28 people sitting around the table, where I have a smaller board at the end of the day. I'm not saying that issues don't come to our board with respect to some operational issues. They do, because that's the way our bylaws are written, okay? But at the end of the day, it's not about taking away or pushing anybody to a lower level. It's about actually enhancing communication, identifying everybody's role and responsibility, and then listening and make sure that we take that to a new level. So, I may have fluttered around a little bit on the question, but we don't get involved in the OPD discussions at the board level. We entrust and leave that to staff. Staff will report through an executive director's report. What we do get, Shaun, at the board level is a detailed executive director's report. The executive director's report touches on all operational issues within our organisation, okay? And that report is discussed at the board level. That's where your district president, who currently sits, or a new regional or independent director sits, can voice those concerns, share those concerns, and look for solutions.
At the root of your question, I think what I'm hearing is, how does the president's forum work for you as a club?
Yeah, I guess. I gave the example through the OPDL issue that's been relevant the last couple of months. But in my mind, that's an issue that's been mismanaged. As a club, what redress do I have? How do I, in this new governance model, make a change? Or at least get my voice heard, or the club's voice heard, for change to be made? When, as far as I'm concerned, we have more of a voice today. How do we have more of a voice, you're saying, once you remove district presidents from that boardroom table?
Well, I just mentioned to you, it's not being discussed at the board, currently under the current setup. It's not there. We made that collective decision.
Is that another question here at the back?
Paula Denofrio from Woodbridge Soccer Club. I just wanted to perhaps add to Shaun's comment in that perhaps what you, typically in a good governance structure, you have oversight. And that oversight basically checks that, you know, if you've implemented policies and procedures that, you know, whether it's you decide the frequency, how do you ensure that that's happening? There's an independent assessment. And that, I believe, to Shaun's point, it's perhaps the oversight of the executive director seems to be missing, and maybe that just needs to be clarified.
Okay, that's a good point to take away and to build off of. When it does come to a decision-making process, or it comes to an appeal process, it is independent. And whatever those decisions are made, if it defines gaps or deficiencies within a system, then it's our responsibility, staff's responsibility, to close those gaps going forward. So, you know, if the oversight needs to be enhanced in any way, that's something that should be looked at. It should be brought forward in a sort of formalised manner, if I can use that terminology, and identified, especially if people feel that it's not currently there.
We've got about five more minutes, folks, if there's any further questions. Take a quick peek into the live chat and see what questions are there. It looks like we're going to be wrapping up. If there's any further questions from the room? One more?
So, I'm Clary with Thornhill Soccer Club. Just to add on to that, what I'm hearing is, what's the districts? I haven't really heard much from the districts say as to the new org structure and what their feedback is, because I'd certainly like to hear from that.
Would any of the district presidents like to comment? Go ahead, William. You want to speak, William? Come up here. You okay there? William Hay from Peel Halton Soccer Association.
So, I suppose, evident from the fact that we have sponsored a number of the amendments that are going to be presented at the February 11th SGM, you can assume that I'm a proponent. I think that there are distinct advantages to what we're looking at doing, taking away the conflicts that we often find ourselves in currently as board members, and allow us to focus on our clubs, our members from our districts, and their issues at the board table, as opposed to the larger corporate issues that we have to deal with on an ongoing basis. It frequently puts us in a precarious position. I think that the gaps that we have right now, and we do, and what you were speaking to is one of those gaps, we're in a part that I liken to, may not be a popular reference, a camel race. Camels have two speeds. They have a walk and they have a full gallop. And what's in between is kind of ugly. And right now, we're perhaps in a little bit of an ugly phase. Going through the process that we have done thus far, and we've done an enormous amount of research from a board perspective as to models and concepts and ideas coming to the information we have now, we have gone to steps where we've separated a lot of the operational procedures from the boardroom and put it into Johnny's area. But I think the next steps that we're looking at taking is going to fill those gaps in between and allow us to be that sober second thought for staff, to bring issues that not only affect my district, but a lot of the district in this area have the same issues. Tony has the same issues. My clubs have the same issues as you do. We have an opportunity, we have a forum that will allow us to directly affect not only the president, but the executive director in that format. So, I'm looking forward to the change.
I believe Bill Spears had a question as well.
More of a comment on this whole issue. Certainly, my district, Toronto, has a lot of the concerns that I've heard expressed. In particular, we had a board meeting just last week where the question came up from several of my directors. How do the clubs through their districts have input into the new setup? So, it's certainly an issue we have, and it's perhaps a leap of faith that the new setup will improve things rather than making them worse, but it's something we've got to watch very closely. One issue I've been pushing has certainly been a regional forum in addition to the president's forum. As Ron mentioned a couple of times, we have a regular meeting of what we call the central region forum, which obviously includes the districts here today. One thing I would like to see is getting that recognised in the bylaw somehow, and we will perhaps be working on an amendment to go forward for the June AGM, or the June, yes, June AGM. Obviously, it's too late for the SGM coming up in February. And again, there's a couple of things, you know, William Benson mentioned, there's perhaps a few gaps in what we're proposing, and there's a few things we've recognised in discussing it within our board. One being, while we support the idea of some gender equity on the board, we're not convinced that what's been proposed to this point will actually work. And I've written a separate email to Ron and Johnny on that, and it's something we'll be following up on. There's a few other gaps as well. We don't see anything in the new bylaws about how nominations are made, who gets to make nominations, what the deadlines are. So, there's a number of things to still look at, and certainly, within my district, and I'm sure in other districts, we'll be looking at that a little closer. Generally, though, we see the need for some type of governance reform. We're not 100% convinced yet that what's been put forward is correct, but it's something we'll be working on. And as Ron mentioned several times, we may find out after a year, things are perhaps not working the way they should, and we have the opportunity to make changes then, so...
Thank you, Bill. Do you want to add anything to that, Ron?
No, just to reinforce, it's organic. We don't have the answers to everything right up front. It's a process, it's a journey we're on, and it's important that we collectively work as a team and take that forward. Tony?
Good evening, everybody. I want to take the opportunity and address the member's question from the YRSA. I've been sitting on the OSA board for just over two years now. There is a great deal of work has gone into this reform. I share some of the concerns that I'm hearing from the membership from all sides. I'd like to see a little bit more clarity around some of those answers before we move forward. I think we're almost there. I think we're almost there. I think with a little bit more tweaking, we can get the right model that's good for Ontario. We've looked high and low. I've definitely done a lot of reading and studying over the last two years on these models, and there's a variation of them throughout the world. And we can't take any simple one right from our governing body, FIFA, and pretend that it's going to work for soccer in Ontario. I believe we need to find the right combination of a model that works for us. I think we're close. I think we're very close. I believe some very important tweaks need to happen, but in the end, from my perspective, it's up to my membership on where we go from here. But I want to reiterate that there's been a lot of work done around this. They've done a great job, and we're almost there. I'm not convinced that this is the right model just yet. I agree with my colleagues, a little bit more tweaking somewhere needs to be done. I'd like to see clarity, clear definitions, before we move to the next stage. I just, the type of individual I am, instead of taking some leaps of faith. But your information coming back to us, your feedback, whether it's this evening or through email, or for the people live-streaming out there, is keep giving us the feedback. We need to hear what that feedback is. As much as we try and wrap our heads to what our members need, sometimes putting yourself in a boardroom, you kind of start losing sight about what's really out there and what they need. So, the definition of conflict and having representation is something I personally grapple with, because I believe there is a need for representation, but how do you cross the other line? I don't know. I don't have an answer for that. So, those are my reservations on where we are today, and I hope that through the next set of town halls that are had throughout the rest of the province, is that good, strong feedback from you, the members, are heard, so then this body can make its final decision on where we want to go for soccer. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add to some of the discussion around leap of faith. For the last three years, we've been under and have the support of what we call an advisory committee, or an advisory group to the board. These are professional people, professional people in strategic planning, governance, communications, operational issues, et cetera, who have been taking the board through its process. So, I just want to communicate that to you as a whole membership, that this hasn't been 28 people sitting around the table. It's about a highly skilled advisory group that has worked at the national level, provincial level, of many sport organisations across this country, and continues to educate and communicate with us with respect to the initiatives that we take going forward. That advisory group continues to take feedback in providing new suggestions, new recommendations moving forward. So, when we talk about leap of faith, we've had professional people actually conducting workshops and working with our workshops and working with our board of directors at the end of the day.
Thank you very much, Ron, and thank you to everyone here tonight. Please give yourselves a round of applause. I know this isn't the most exciting subject, but it is an important one for our game. Another opportunity coming up for personal development is the Soccer Summit 2017. We encourage you to save the date, March 3rd to 5th, 2017. Tickets are now on sale. And if we can have your attention just for a second, it's the premier development opportunity. So this year, we're going to be out at Trent University on the Oshawa campus, with on-field sessions taking place at the beautiful neighbouring Oshawa Civic Recreational Centre. The culmination venue is a great opportunity and a great backdrop for further learning and development opportunities for our game. So check out ontariosoccer.net to see some of the 2017 speakers, and there are still more announcements to come. If you haven't seen them yet so far, we have Jason DeVos, Sheldon Kennedy, Lorraine LaFrennan, three really fantastic keynote speakers that'll be spread out over the weekend, definitely worth the price of admission alone. And we've been announcing speakers in the match officials, administrators, coaching realms, all for the last month, and there are still more announcements to come. So I encourage you to check out ontariosoccer.net for more fantastic prices and group opportunities, as well as youth opportunities and female mentorship and discounts for groups, as well as I mentioned. Thanks very much again, folks, and we hope to see you on March 3rd to 5th at the Soccer Summit. If you have any further questions about that, I'll be around for a little bit after night. Thank you again.